For River City Council Public Hearing, will please come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Skadim, Joseph Kamara, Stephen Kamara, Kilby, Long, Pelletier, Viveras, Vice President La Libbey LeBeau.
Here. Motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open.
Motion made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Item one. Petitioner has an existing 13-foot, 7-inch driveway opening on Bayview Street and would like to add a 16-foot driveway on his Wheeler Street frontage to improve off-street parking access and provide additional off-street parking spaces. This is for Neep Bang, 22 Bayview Street, for curb cut. Any proponents? Calling any proponents? Any opponents? No opponents. These are all color-up cuts, so we're going to keep them in the same hearing. Item two. Billstone Medical Outsourcing Real Estate, 580 Commerce Drive, for the removal of curbing as follows. Petitioner is proposing to adjust driveway access openings to their property as part of a facility expansion project. Any proponents? Any opponents? Item three. Kudo Management Group, Duncan Donuts, 169 Main Street, Stoneham, Mass., for the removal of curbing as follows. 400 Quarry Street. The petitioner has existing openings totaling 60 feet, 11 inches, opening on Quarry Street, and would like to add a 20-foot driveway for the purpose of legally accessing the dumpsters serving the property. Proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause a significant adverse effect to on-street parking in the area. Any proponents? Any opponents? Item four. David De Souza, 1071 Smith Street, North Dayton, Mass., for the removal of curbing as followers. 405 Shove Street. The petitioner has an existing 11-foot driveway opening and would like to widen the driveway an additional 13 feet, 3 inches, to improve off-street parking and provide an additional off-street parking space. Proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause a significant adverse effect to on-street parking in the area. Any proponents? Any opponents? Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion closed.
Motion made. Do we have a second? Motion made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier.
Aye. All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye, so voted. City Council Committee on Finance, will please come to order. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselors Skadim, Joseph Kamara, Stephen Kamara, Kilby, Long, Pelletier, Viveras, Vice President La Libbey LeBeau.
Here. First item on our agenda is citizens' input. We have one person signed up to speak before Finance. It's Dan Robillard, 145 Old Second Street, and the subject is city business and charter.
Vice President La Libbey LeBeau, President Ponte, members of the council, Dan Robillard, 145 Old Second Street. I've watched over the past several months, and it's, I can no longer sit silent. The record needs to be corrected in a few areas. First of all, let me be very clear. While Jayzo Carrera, Mayor Jayzo Carrera, is innocent until proven guilty in a court of law, I feel that he can no longer fulfill his duties as the mayor and should resign immediately. Secondly, I watched a couple of weeks ago, maybe four or five meetings ago, when the mayor came down on the council floor without an invitation. He grossly misinterpreted the charter. The charter says that the mayor can sit as an ex-officio member of any appointed board or commission within the city of Fall River. The mayor does not have any voting rights on that board. He can have input, give testimony, get all the records of the meetings, but he is not a voting member. That only applies to city boards and commissions. As he should know, since his political career started here, this is an elected body. The city council is not an appointed board. It is the legislative body elected by the people. Therefore, he has no right, in my opinion, to take this floor without an invitation of the council president or any other council member. So he grossly misinterpreted the charter when he said that he could speak on this floor without permission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robillard. Before we start Finance, we're going to present a citation. May I have the members, the coaches, and the manager of the Maplewood Independent U8 Youth Baseball Team come down to the council floor, please?
Sure.
Counselor Skadim, since you're up, would you mind joining them at the table? While they're coming down to the floor, I just, I'm going to turn the mic over to Mr. Arujow. But I just wanted to point out that these fine young gentlemen right here had an amazing season, an amazing summer of baseball. They were not only the district champs, they went on to win the state champs, then the New England champs, and then the Ironman champs at the Cal Ripken World Series. Unbelievable job, guys. The city council wants you to know that the entire city was rooting for you, and we are proud of you. We have a citation for each of you. And if Mr. Arujow would like to say a couple of words, then we'll introduce all of the team members.
First of all, thank you for having us. Everybody's super excited to be here. A little bit about my team, real quick. It wasn't just an accident. These kids started, actually, most of them were here when they were seven. We played in local tournaments. We played against older kids. We took some lumps. We kept grinding. They work so hard. We came, last January, we started. We worked out all winter. Right? All winter, we kept grinding, grinding. A lot of them knew we had districts coming up, see how far we could go. So June came around, and we had our first, we had our first, the districts, and we actually hosted it at Maplewood. And we knew that was our most important tournament, because if we won that, we'd go to states. And that was our ultimate goal, is try to win a state championship. So we did very well, playing on our own park, winning our district, and then we went to Quincy, Massachusetts, to play for the Eastern Massachusetts State Championship. And we played very well. They just, obviously, we're not the biggest, we don't just bash the ball. What, we play smart baseball. We pick up the balls. We pitch well. We do all the little things to get the job done. So we were in Quincy. We had a great tournament. It came down to the wire, and we became state champions. And then, that was our goal. And we kept on going. So we went to Milford, Connecticut. Right? So now, we're in hotels, and these kids are excited, right? They're all staying at hotels, and we're getting to play baseball, traveling to play some baseball, and playing the top competition around. And we really had no expectations when we were there. And all of a sudden, we play a game, play two games, we're starting off with 3-0. We're like, whoa, what are we doing, right? Like, we're just this little team from Fall River. And we just played so well again, and we went undefeated through the whole regionals, playing teams from all over. And again, we were down to our last out, and our last strike. We down to our last strike, right? And we just, we never, we just kept on fighting. And we came back, we won that game. It was unbelievable. So we became New England Regional Champions. And then, we went, I don't even know if any teams from Fall River ever went to a World Series. So we ended up going to New Jersey, Cherry Hill, New Jersey, to play in the World Series for eight-year-olds, the first eight-year-old kid-pitch World Series ever. And we did very well there, too. We went 5-2. The only two teams we actually lost to were the first and second-place team there out of a 16-team tournament. And we played very, very well the whole time. And again, a great experience for these kids. Again, we're in a hotel for seven days, they're swimming together, they're doing everything. They're just, just such a great group. They listen so well, they work so hard. They deserved everything they got this year. We ended up winning the Ironman bracket when we were there, so we finished in fifth. So I thought it was a really good showing by these guys, but it also showed, we got a little more to work on. And this, and this is the group that's going to do it, right? These guys, already, a lot of them are ready. They're working at what they do, a lot of them. And if we're not at practice, I know a lot of them doing it on their own. But we got a little bit more to go, right? We got a little bit, a little bit we can get better at. And we'll try to make another run, but thank you, guys, for having us. It was an incredible year for these guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a stack of citations. I won't read them all. I'll read one of them, and then I'll give it to Coach, and Coach will hand them all out, and then everybody can make their way and shake hands.
Can we do a, Counselor? Can we, when they get their citation, could we then do a photo for the parents? Because they're going to be really mad at Counselor in seat one if we don't.
You're the president, so. So the citation is obviously from the city council, signed by Council President Pam LeBeau. It's an official resolution, be it resolved, that the city council hereby extend its accommodation to, and I'm assuming, it's probably alphabetical order, but we'll call you the MVP, okay? To the MVP Wesley Arujow, Maplewood Independent U8 team, in recognition of your outstanding hard work, dedication, sportsmanship on the Maplewood Independent U8 team, district champion, state champions, New England champions, Ironman champions at the Cal Ripken World Series. The city of Fall River is very proud. Congratulations.
Counselor, look at that photo.
Just want to say one thing.
Counselor in seat two?
Congratulations, Coach, to you and all the parents. I'm sure you had a wonderful time watching the children excel. The Boston Red Sox are happy you guys didn't play them this year, because you guys had more success than the Red Sox this year. Congratulations. You made Fall River very proud.
Thank you. Could you call out each of their names?
Yes, please.
And why don't you just wait for your buddies?
Noah Cahoon. Stephen Chops. Wesley Arujow. Shay Doyle. RJ Fitzgerald. Kayden Furtado. Brady Mack. Camden Maderis. Luke Maderis. Noah Primo. Landon Ravenel. Brayden Souza. Coach Jeff Maderis. Coach Ryan Doyle.
Greg Arujow.
Good job, guys.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, buddy.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Guys, right back to you.
Come back for the other one.
You better go over there. Better bring him a picture. Picture, guys.
All right, let's take a picture.
Hold that smile.
Sam.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Hold that smile.
Thank you.
Item one on our agenda is a mayor and loan order of $2,100,000 for the purchase of snow removal and equipment. We have Mrs. Sahadi, Mrs. Viveras, and Mr. Perry down at the table.
Good evening, Counselors. We are pleased to present the loan order in an effort to try to upgrade the snow removal equipment that's currently at our Department of Community Maintenance. It's important to note that some of these pieces are also going to be multifunctional, and we are going to be able to use them separate and apart from any activities regarding snow removal. And I would ask Mr. Perry to just provide you with a description of the equipment.
Counselors, how are you? Thank you for having us. That's going to be a tough act to follow, but hopefully, we can continue the positive night here. So our aging, we have an aging snow fleet at DPW for our snow removal purposes. Our current vehicles are from 2001, 2001 Internationals. We refurbished them in 2008. We removed the dump bodies, sandblasted and repainted the cabs and chassis, installed stainless steel salter bodies on them to give them some added extra life. That added extra life has met its expectancy, and we are looking for your approval and work and cooperation in hopefully trying to upgrade that fleet to a larger fleet than we've had before, which will hopefully allow us to be able to provide better services and continue to move forward with trying to bring more of the snow removal in-house. There are 14 overall vehicles on this loan order, all of them the same size vehicle, but many of them have different functions. So 10 of the vehicles that you see here will be your traditional DPW combo trucks, like you see out there now, salter bodies, 6.4 cubic yard salters with plows, 10-foot plows. And there are four trucks that are multipurpose. Four of them will be salter combo, combination plow trucks, but with removable salter bodies, which will allow us to use them as dump trucks in our spring and fall seasons for our asphalt and concrete crews, to add to the additional dump truck that we already have in our fleet, which will give us now three, more of an ability to spread it around to each crew, allow them to get more work done. In addition to that, there are another two of these vehicles that will have the salter and plow combo with an additional brine setup. So as you know, we apply brine, a brine mixture, saltwater mixture, to the roadways prior to the storms. It lowers the freezing temperature of the roadway to minus 32 degrees. So that allows us to keep that base layer of roadway and pavement from freezing over. So if, you know, you have a street here or there that we can't get to for quite some time, when we do get there, we're still able to push the snow off. So that's, it's a great benefit. As it stands now, we have one brine truck. This will allow us to create three, and we are going to take our current fleet, and we are going to try to salvage what we can out of that and possibly build another brine truck, which will give me four, that we could split, two in the north end, two in the south end, and hopefully cover the entire city. That's a huge benefit, not something we've ever been able to do. So that, that's another added benefit to this proposed loan order. And I mean, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Obviously, I'm sure you all are familiar with our snow removal operations, and be glad to answer any questions.
Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
The loan order of 2.1, that goes out, how long before we pay it off?
Well, these particular trucks, we could go between seven and 10 years.
Seven, 10 years?
Yes. As Mr. Perry just said, right now, they're close to 20 years old.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Perry, I talked to me a couple of weeks ago, the concern about he had here in the city of Fall River with the equipment that he did have, and the possible that if we didn't get the money, there'd be a problem here in the city of Fall River, because he just don't have the equipment. It's pretty well, he didn't say junk, but it's pretty close to junk. But it's good that with everything that's going on here in the city of Fall River, and then you wonder, 2.1 million, and sometimes some of my colleagues will vote against anything the mayor's sending down. But this is important, and to say, well, we don't want to vote for it, I don't think anybody feels that we're here tonight. Very important that we do this, that we make sure that the city is safe and clean, and I get complete confidence in you, Mr. Perry, that you will do a good job with that equipment. And I'm hoping that you'll be able to take care of the equipment so it can last as long as it can last. How's, it's going off a loan order, right? So now, when do we get the equipment?
Counselor, if you approve this loan order this evening, Mr. Perry can place the order effective tomorrow, basically, and he can speak to the delivery date on the, on the plows.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor, first and foremost. Secondly, on the order, so if it's approved tonight, I can place the order tomorrow morning. I spoke to the vendor earlier today and let him know that I would update him in the morning. The first seven vehicles on this order will be in the beginning of November, first week of November, and then the second seven, we're anticipating the first or second week of January.
Hey, Counsel, I'd just like to interject. These items are on the state bid list, so we don't have to go through any type of procurement process. We're able to purchase them directly from the vendors, who the state is certified.
That is correct.
So you got the list that's ready to go?
Absolutely.
It's going out tomorrow.
The vendor and the production line are actually anxiously anticipating the order.
So we're hoping that we have no snow till January 2nd?
I'm hoping I don't have any snow till April 1st, Counselor, but you and I both know that's not, not a reality.
So we'll have all that equipment nice and shiny, never used? I go for that. With that ideal, and good luck, and I'm glad that we're moving ahead.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Perry, why are seven in November and seven in January?
Just, I mean, production-wise, they do have other orders, Counselor. The four-by-fours and the dual-purpose vehicles are going to take a little bit longer. There's a little more entail with those production items, so it's a rather large order, but they've given me a commitment for the seven in November to make sure that we can have them in place for this, this winter.
Thank you. Counselor in seat four, Counselor Kilby?
My comments are in line with, exactly with Counselor Pelletier was stating. So when was the last time we went out for such a large order? Was it 20 years ago, a large loan order like that?
Yeah, the last upgrade of our snow fleet was in 2001. Prior to that, we were driving, I believe, when I started, we had the old Max. The dump bodies actually tilted forward, and you had the side spinners. Those, I believe, were 88s, 85s in that area. So we upgraded it in '01, but we bought seven. We've had those seven same vehicles, obviously, as I said, we refurbished them in '08.
You better go over there. Better bring some picture. Picture, guys.
All right, let's take the picture. Hold that smile.
Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item one on our agenda is a mayor and loan order of $2,100,000 for the purchase of snow removal and equipment. We have Mrs. Sahadi, Mrs. Viveras, and Mr. Perry down at the table.
Good evening, councilors. We are pleased to present the loan order in an effort to try to upgrade the snow removal equipment that's currently at our Department of Community Maintenance. It's important to note that some of these pieces are also going to be multifunctional, and we are going to be able to use them separate and apart from any activities regarding snow removal. And I would ask Mr. Perry to just provide you with a description of the equipment.
Councilors, how are you? Thank you for having us. That's going to be a tough act to follow, but hopefully we can continue the positive night here. So, our aging, we have an aging snow fleet at DPW for our snow removal purposes. Our current vehicles are from 2001, 2001 Internationals. We refurbished them in 2008. We removed the dump bodies, sandblasted and repainted the cabs and chassis, installed stainless steel salter bodies on them to give them some added extra life. That added extra life has met its expectancy, and we are looking for your approval and work and cooperation in hopefully trying to upgrade that fleet to a larger fleet than we've had before, which will hopefully allow us to be able to provide better services and continue to move forward with trying to bring more of the snow removal in-house. There are 14 overall vehicles on this loan order, all of them the same size vehicle, but many of them have different functions. So, 10 of the vehicles that you see here will be your traditional DPW combo trucks like you see out there now, salter bodies, 6.4 cubic yard salters with plows, 10-foot plows, and there are four trucks that are multi-purpose. Four of them will be salter combo, combination plow trucks, but with removable salter bodies, which will allow us to use them as dump trucks in our spring and fall seasons for our asphalt and concrete crews, to add to the additional dump truck that we already have in our fleet, which will give us now three, more of an ability to spread it around to each crew, allow them to get more work done. In addition to that, there are another two of these vehicles that will have the salter and plow combo with an additional brine setup. So, as you know, we apply brine, a brine mixture, saltwater mixture to the roadways prior to the storms. It lowers the freezing temperature of the roadway to minus 32 degrees. So, that allows us to keep that base layer of roadway and pavement from freezing over. So, if, you know, you have a street here or there that we can't get to for quite some time, when we do get there, we're still able to push the snow off. So, that's a, it's a great benefit. As it stands now, we have one brine truck. This will allow us to create three, and we are going to take our current fleet, and we are going to try to salvage what we can out of that and possibly build another brine truck, which will give me four, that we could split, two in the north end, two in the south end, and hopefully cover the entire city. That's a huge benefit, not something we've ever been able to do. So, that, that's another added benefit to this proposed loan order. And, I mean, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Obviously, I'm sure you all are familiar with our snow removal operations, and be glad to answer any questions.
Councilor in seat seven, Councilor Pelletier.
The loan order of 2.1, that goes out, how long before we pay it off?
Well, these particular trucks, we could go between seven and 10 years.
Seven, 10 years?
Yes. As Mr. Perry just said, right now, they're close to 20 years old.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Perry had talked to me a couple of weeks ago, the concern about he had here in the city of Fall River with the equipment that he did have, and the possible that if we didn't get the money, there'd be a problem here in the city of Fall River, because he just don't have the equipment. It's pretty well, he didn't say junk, but it's pretty close to junk. But it's good that with everything that's going on here in the city of Fall River, and then you wonder, 2.1 million, and sometimes some of my colleagues will vote against anything the mayor's sending down. But this is important, and to say, "Well, we don't want to vote for it," I don't think anybody feels that we're here tonight. Very important that we do this, that we make sure that the city is safe and clean, and I get complete confidence in you, Mr. Perry, that you will do a good job with that equipment. And I'm hoping that you'll be able to take care of the equipment so it can last as long as it can last. How's, it's going off a loan order, right? So, now, when do we get the equipment?
Counselor, if you approve this loan order this evening, Mr. Perry can place the order effective tomorrow, basically, and he can speak to the delivery date on the, on the plows.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor, first and foremost. Secondly, on the order, so if it's approved tonight, I can place the order tomorrow morning. I spoke to the vendor earlier today and let him know that I would update him in the morning. The first seven vehicles on this order will be in the beginning of November, first week of November, and then the second seven, we're anticipating the first or second week of January.
Hey, Council, I'd just like to interject. These items are on the state bid list, so we don't have to go through any type of procurement process. We're able to purchase them directly from the vendors who the state has certified.
That is correct.
So, you got the list that's ready to go?
Absolutely.
It's going out tomorrow.
The vendor and the production line are actually anxiously anticipating the order.
So, we're hoping that we have no snow till January 2nd?
I'm hoping I don't have any snow till April 1st, Council, but you and I both know that's not, not a, not a reality.
So, we'll have all that equipment nice and shiny, never used? I go for that. With that ideal, and good luck, and I'm glad that we're moving ahead.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council. Mr. Perry, why are seven in November and seven in January?
Just, I mean, production-wise, they do have other orders, Counselor. The four-by-fours and the dual-purpose vehicles are going to take a little bit longer, there's a little more entail with those production items. So, it's a rather large order, but they've given me a commitment for the seven in November to make sure that we can have them in place for this, this winter.
Thank you. Councilor in seat four, Councilor Kilby.
My comments are in line with, exactly with Council Pelletier was stating. So, when was the last time we went out for such a large order? Was it 20 years ago, a large loan order like that?
Yeah, the last upgrade of our snow fleet was in 2001. Prior to that, we were driving, I believe, when I started, we had the old Max. The dump bodies actually tilted forward, and you had the side spinners. Those, I believe, were 88s, 85s in that area. So, we upgraded it in '01, but we bought seven. We've had those seven same vehicles, obviously, as I said, we refurbished them in '08, but those are the seven vehicles that we've been operating with since then. This will be the largest order that we've ever made. This will be the largest investment that we've ever made in our snow removal operations. And as we've said in the past, we'd like to try to get more of this in-house. We have, currently have 19 CDL licensed drivers in the department. We will be able to cover these trucks and put bodies in them. If we should happen to exhaust that list, we can go to outside departments, which have always worked with us in the past, whether it be trash or, or snow removal, to help us cover our shifts.
Okay. Yeah, we spoke privately with regard to this too, John, so, I mean, it's well, it's money well spent. We live in New England, we do have these major storms. We want to provide safe access to hospitals, to schools, and everything else that the public expects us to, to deliver. So, I too have my utmost respect in you.
Thank you.
You bring credibility to the request, because that's how much I think of you, okay?
Thank you very much.
So, I'll be supporting this as well, and like Leo alluded to, government cannot stop just because of the issues that are going on in the city. We got to continue, you know, provide for our citizens, and this is, this makes total sense to me, so, Ayeel.
Agreed, thank you.
Any other councilors wishing to speak? Councilor in seat three.
Mr. Perry, we do appreciate your work and the thought of your department. What, if any, savings will occur in terms of not having to hire outside plows to do work as a result of getting this fleet on board? And I assume all of the drivers will be city employees, correct?
Correct, they will be.
So, what might we be saving by bringing this fleet on board?
Counsel, I'd be hesitant to put a number to it. I can tell you it would be, in my opinion, significant, but that would be an analysis that we would partake in once we have the trucks in, in hand and we are actually able to, to get a, a good comparison. So, the intent is to take one of the sectors, mirror it with another sector that is topographically comparable to it, and make one of those sectors a complete city sector, if you will. So, all of the vehicles in that sector will be city, city-driven vehicles by city employees, and then we will take a sector alongside of it with the same number and same complement of vehicles, and see what those two costs equate to, and begin to prepare an analysis on that. We've got some tentative numbers that we've worked on, but until it's in real time, we can't give you any total concrete numbers.
Sure. And I, and I know that that question was, in some ways, not answerable, because it all depends on how much snow we have.
Correct.
What kind of winter we have. But significantly, we should be impacting the private contracts by having this fleet. That should be reduced.
Absolutely. If you take into account the seven vehicles we have now, we're doubling that. So, that would account for seven vehicles that get paid at a combo rate of $126 an hour. So, that's seven of those vehicles that we may not need. Now, as you stated, every storm is different. So, if we were to get a blizzard, or we were to get buried, obviously, we would probably, all hands on deck, we would still call in every private that we could. But this fleet, this size fleet will significantly allow us to spread our trucks in a larger, broader area, and, and provide a better service, more timely as well.
Just to add to that, Council, as Mr. Perry said, the private rate for some of these vehicles gets as high as $126 per hour. If we look at our internal costs, we estimate that our labor cost would be $40 per hour, and then we'd add a fuel estimate of maybe another $10 per hour. So, there's a significant difference. The balance would be the purchase of the equipment and the maintenance of the equipment. But as Mrs. Sahadi said, we're going to be able to go out seven to 10 years, but we know, in our practicality, because these are seasonal vehicles, and they're only used for several months out of the year, that the life of the equipment is going to be far in excess of that useful life. So, we're, we're fairly confident that we're going to see some dramatic savings with the snow removal. And as Mr. Perry mentioned, the, the opportunity to compare the two directly during a full snow season will give us some really good hard numbers, but we're very confident that there's going to be some significant savings, not to mention the fact that we're going to give our own city employees the opportunity to work and earn additional funds, you know, by participating in snow removal.
Good. And if you will, Counsel, just one more thing to add to that. Again, with the size of this fleet and the increase in that goes along hand in hand. So, this is really the second piece to this process. So, when the Council was gracious enough to supply us with the capital funds needed to upgrade our current pickup truck fleet, smaller one-ton truck fleet, I purchased all of those vehicles with plow attachments and snow equipment. So, those are ready to go as well. So, all of those vehicles that we purchased with the last capital expense that the Council approved are going to be winter-ready and able to be out there operating as well. So, that is the smaller piece, gets us into the smaller side streets, those tighter areas. These will be able to take care of our major roadways, our industrial park, and things of that nature, as well as our hills. So, it's really a two-pronged approach. All of the vehicles that we bought previous to this were bought with the intent of understanding that that was going to add to our effectiveness with snow removal as well. So, that fleet is going to grow quite, quite significantly.
Good. And just finally, to give credit where credit's due, and I wonder if the administration might just give us a little bit of insight into whether or not we might be facing any additional request for funds to upgrade vehicles. I know that we've significantly increased our fleet of firefighting equipment. I think that is complete, as I recall. There may be one more vehicle that's online that's coming. If you could just update us, also with the police department, I know there are quite a few new police vehicles have been provided over the last several years. So, could you just let us know, might we be anticipating additional appropriation for more vehicles for any department? Or are we pretty much on target now of getting everybody upgraded with good quality vehicles?
Well, as you know, Counselor, you've done, the Council's actually been very supportive with the fire department. There's been a huge upgrade of the fire apparatus. There is one additional piece of fire apparatus and engine that is due to arrive. It's being manufactured, so it hasn't arrived here yet. And because we were such a good customer, one of the vendors has offered us a, a deal, if you will, on one more piece that Chief Lynch thinks would be very valuable to also put into service. So, Mrs. Sahadi's in the process now of taking a look at that, and we're trying to determine, again, the value added on that. So, we may be coming back to the Council for one more loan order for that piece of fire apparatus that, again, Chief Lynch would like us to, to consider. So, I'm estimating that'll probably come down to you in October?
Yeah, it's possible. I need to speak with the chief and see exactly what he's looking for. He, he has a piece of equipment that the company has offered to him on a lease. I believe it would make a whole lot more sense if we bonded for it. The interest rate would be significantly lower. The interest rate on the lease is 2.89. We can get a bonding rate much lower than that. It's a half a million dollar piece of equipment, so it's not, you know, terribly expensive, but it's not something we can buy out of the operating budget. So, we will be looking at potentially coming for a loan order on that as well.
And of course, the cruisers in the police department have been budgeted, so those, those purchases will be made, but they won't require any further appropriation or bonding from the city council. And as Mr. Perry mentioned, over the most recent years, you've done a very good job at upgrading a lot of the DCM equipment, and I think virtually all of those needs have been appropriately addressed. So, in answer to your question, but for this possible additional piece of fire apparatus, I don't see that we should need to come back to the Council in this fiscal year for any additional appropriation for vehicles.
Good. Okay, well, I think that's to be acknowledged, and people need to understand that though we have had some bumps in the road, we certainly have not stopped doing the work that this city needs us to do in terms of upgrading our equipment. So, I commend you for bringing this forward. I certainly will be supportive. Ayeel, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor in seat one, and then Councilor in seat two.
Thank you, Madam President. While I do support this, I've, I've got a number of questions, and I, I think the, the biggest issue here is the planning part, and I think this Council has talked about this for a number of years, and we continue to get away from it and continue to just piecemeal bond authorizations without any true plan or vision of what's really going on. So, I've got a question about maintenance plans, replacement plans, terms of priorities, and terms of capital improvements. Just seeing a capital improvement plan that we have not yet seen, I know the Collins Center came down just for buildings, but we don't, we don't even know what the impact is, or what the capital requests have been for other departments to put this in terms of priorities. Not saying that this isn't a priority. And then we also don't know what the impact is on the debt schedule long-term. Again, the councilors are all sitting here saying this is a great thing, I understand, and I'll support it, because I understand the need to make sure that we have the equipment to remove snow when, during the winter, winter months. But what are we looking at? Are we looking at full replacement of these vehicles? I mean, are these vehicles going to be used during other operational aspects of, of public works, or are we just going to see these $2.1 million of these, these vehicles just sitting from December through April? Right? So, I, I, first, I guess I'd, I'd start back with the capital improvement plan. Do we have a capital improvement plan that incorporates all the other departments? And if so, when can we get a copy of that?
Yes, Counselor, you actually have a copy of it. We provided it to you much earlier in the year when it was required by the charter. It included the information, which was mostly infrastructure from the community compact, as well as the capital assets requested from the police department, DCM, you've already approved, the fire department, et cetera. It's a living, moving document. So, the half a million dollar piece of apparatus that we're talking about this evening from the fire chief was not on his list, although certainly something that, you know, as of today, based on the offer that he was given and the cost of that, that particular equipment, he thought it was important to add to it. Mr. Perry had on his list a number of dump trucks and other vehicles, most of which were the lighter trucks that you have already approved, and he's already purchased. The seven trucks, so living document, again, we work with the departments on a regular basis, looking at what our debt service is, and remembering that we want to keep the annual appropriation at somewhere around $10 million. We see what's coming off that schedule, and we look at what's going on that schedule, and looking at this $2 million and being able to amortize it, even if we said we were amortizing it over 10 years, we'd be looking at somewhere around $215,000, $217,000 annually, which we could certainly afford to do within that $10 million cap that, that we've included in our internal records or, or policy. So, we do look at it. It is a kind of moving document. Certainly, there are department heads that, you know, when they provide us with the list, and I continuously upgrade that list, or update that list, if you will, from the departments. But there's always something that comes up that they'd like to have, that they never included on it, especially with the infrastructure, you know? There's a new roof that needs to be done that wasn't assessed in the first place. And, and we look at that, and we look at, again, the amortization of the debt service, and try to determine when it's best to do a project, as well as even with the infrastructure, we look at it in conjunction with Mr. Gallagher and the timing of the projects and what we can get done in any given year. As you know, we sometimes authorize projects, and they seem like they take forever to get done, and some of that's just in the timing of, of being able to schedule it and getting the contractors to do the work.
So, in terms of the capital improvement plan that you said you submitted, so that was, that included actual equipment outside of the building infrastructure with the?
It did.
Okay, so, I apologize, because I, I don't recall that.
It had police cruisers on it, it had police cruisers on it, it had the vans on it, had the transit van that he was looking for, the animal. Yep, there was some fire equipment on it, so it did.
So, what, what other FY '20 capital items are we looking to purchase, and what's the impact on the, on the debt schedule?
So, we've been looking at that as of, as of today, because, again, it, it tends to move. The only other project that looks like we need to address is the $4.9 to $5 million water phase 18 that we will be coming to you. It's generally an annual appropriation for the next phase of the water, and it normally comes down in the spring, sometime in the May-June timeframe. And I would anticipate, after speaking with Paul Furlin, that we would be expecting to come with that loan order later in the year as well.
Okay, so, in, in terms of the impact on the, on the debt schedule, so you think the $200,000 a year, obviously, you're going to have some debt retirement, but based on the, what you foresee, at least for the immediate future within the next, you know?
Excluding the high school, we are well under $10 million right now.
Okay. And then, in terms of the replacement plan, I know we haven't really done a good job of that in the past in terms of replacing some of our equipment, and we're starting to do that now. My only concern, again, is, obviously, we're buying it all at once, which means that,
It's going to expire at the same time.
Like everything else with all, with all our schools and, you know, all the HVAC systems go. What are we doing in terms of replacement? Are we going to stop building that in, into the actual operating budget? Or are we still continuing to look to, in the future, when we need to replace these items, go out to bonding?
So, we're, we're trying to roll into the budget as much as we can. So, the police department has a rolling capital line item now for their cruisers. Mr. Gallagher also for his trucks. You actually, within the annual operating budget, authorize the rolling of his trucks. We have not really done that with the DCM trucks as of this point, because we're still trying to get to where we need to be with regard to the replacement of the old expiring fleet. But we should be able to do that on the, in the operating budget as much as possible, at least for the smaller trucks. These larger dump trucks will probably always be bonded, but the smaller trucks, we're anticipating Park Department, Cemetery Department, and they will all just replace, but eventually being able to put those small vehicles within the operating budget.
So, in terms of the maintenance plan, are we doing the ma, we still doing maintenance in-house, are we having that outsourced? What do we?
We, we handle everything we can in-house, you know, as, as much as we can. There are situations where we send things out to be serviced. With these trucks, I don't anticipate having a, a significant issue with them for several years, but another interesting thing with this was worked into this, the price for each truck was the cost spread out amongst them for the computer and the software to diagnose them, because they are newer trucks, they don't marry to the software and, and style truck we have now. So, that's been implemented in this. As Mary said, we've just replaced pretty much the entire fleet across all of the departments. So, that would include Parks, Cemeteries, DPW, Traffic as well with their vehicles. So, we've just done that. And the intent is, as she said, with the police cruisers and Mr. Gallagher's fleet, we anticipate trying to roll, add into our, excuse me, operating budget each year, if possible, funds to either replace or upgrade equipment that might need it. That, 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 that thought process has been heard, and it makes sense. So, we'd like to do that. The last thing we want to do is put ourselves in a position where we were before, where all of the fleet is old and everything has to be replaced. Not only is it a monumental task, but it's also a significant cost. So, we continue to want to do that. With these vehicles here, as I said, these, see, these are a bigger-sized truck. So, the smaller one-tonnes that you see out there, the F-350s with the small dump bodies in the back, have already been purchased throughout the departments. We have those. And the, we actually purchased a F-550, sorry, 750 for, for my department, which is a mid-size dump body truck. Two of these will be dump body trucks, to, to another point of one of your questions. So, of these 14, 12 of them in the spring and fall will set. But there are two dump bodies that will be working with our crews, with the additional third dump body that we have, plus the smaller ones. For where we're at now with our concrete and asphalt crews, that's sufficient for what we need right now. Maybe someday down the road, as we said, as we can continue to grow the department and the scope of the work that the concrete and asphalt crews are doing, we may need larger vehicles, and at that point, we could, we could revisit that. Or we could actually look at these same vehicles, much like we did in '08 with our other ones. We remove the dump body and put straight salters on them. And this would be a reverse case. So, you would go and you'd take the straight salter body off, and you could implement a, a dump body on any of them if we needed a fourth dump body or a third dump body. So, we, we have some options to work in this plan here with them, but the key would be to get us going with this now. The rest of the fleet's been replaced, and my directive to all of my mechanic fleet is to stay on top of them, and to make sure that if any problems arise, they're brought up immediately, not looked aside, and we're trying to get away from the Band-Aid kind of mentality, right? So, let's, let's make sure that we maintain these So let's, let's make sure that we maintain these trucks and if there's a significant repair, then we have to make that repair, not try to, you know, fix it with Band-Aids and duct tape. So this is going to give us a fresh start, much, you know, as I said, in conjunction with the prior loan order for the capital expenses. Together, has all of the departments at a good starting point and, and we try to keep, keep that going.
So just, again, playing devil's advocate here, just in terms of the, do you say 12?
Yes.
Are going to sit?
Correct.
So I guess, did we do a cost benefit analysis to see if it made more sense just to buy maybe half of that and then try to get drivers with equipment that matched that out so that when the snow comes, we just have vendors come in with those, those vehicles? The only reason I say that is because I guess I would question to you would be whether or not we have a concern with the fact that these vehicles are going to be sitting, well, you're going to have tire rot, you're going to have obviously not moving. You know, so that creates some maintenance issues with these vehicles. And then again, I, you know, we never know what type of winter we get. Sometimes we get a mild winter like last winter. I mean, you know, you, you talk about maybe two snow events and they were more probably some sanding operations more than plowing operations, right? So you could get a very light winter than when your vehicles are going to be sitting even more, so. I guess a question, you know, you, you're better at this.
I, I know where you're coming from.
A technical person in terms of driving of the vehicles, so.
So as I said, our current fleet is from 2001, so you can imagine at this point, the work that's gone into keeping that fleet alive. So we take it seriously, so at, at the beginning of every season, we prep each truck. We bring one, each one in one by one. We go right through it. We see what the needs on that truck are. We replace what needs to be replaced and then at the end of the season, whether it's a good season or a bad season, those trucks are brought in again. Tires replaced if need be, cutting edges on the blades if need be. Everything is housed inside whenever possible. Tire rot you, you'd get on a vehicle that may sit for two, three years, something along that line. These are heavy duty tires. These aren't like your traditional car tire. I wouldn't worry too much about that. But again, maintenance has been something that's been preached to the department for quite some time now. So we've been able to, you know, baby the fleet that we have now to get us to where we are. With this new fleet, I don't foresee many of those issues coming up, but I do understand where you're coming from. But in, in all things, in my mind, better to have and not need than need and not have, right? So yes, last year was a, a mild winter, not as bad as some in the recent past. We could get bombarded this year. You can read the Farmer's Almanac, you can, you know, go see a palm reader, you can, you know, ask somebody to tell you future. We don't know. In, in New England, we could get hit every day or we could, could skip out for months at a time. But without the equipment in place, we're left, you know, at the mercy of what is going to come down. I mean, this is just going to be able to allow us to operate in, in a much more efficient manner than we have before. You know, for a smaller two, three inch storm with this and with the implementation of the new trucks that we just got that were all purchased with new snow equipment, we may have some smaller storms where we don't even need to go outside to privates. That's my hope. I'm not going to promise that because I wouldn't want to have to come back and try to explain why I made a promise I couldn't keep. But that would be the intent, you know, where we could, you know, scour the city with city vehicles and not have to see any, any privates. Also in that, we've recently worked with the ASME Union to, we've recently worked with the ASME Union to implement snow bonuses and, and things of that nature with them, which is going to allow us now to take those departments and also spread them out in the city. Whereas Park Department would handle the park drives and, and parking lots and Cemetery would handle the cemetery and only stay right within the proximity of their areas. We're going to be able to bring those into our fleet as well, so once the park drives and parking lots are done, we're going to be able to use that equipment on our snow fleet as well. So that's going to add another eight to 10 vehicles as well to this. So that's the intent inevitably to get to a point where on the smaller storms, we can handle it completely with city pieces or very minimum private. And even on the bigger ones, you know, we're more efficient and bringing more in-house.
Okay. I don't want to get into snowsteppings, we know.
Oh, no. These, these are the, the individuals that work, Counselor, just want to make sure that's not missed. These, these guys are up 24 hours. This isn't, you know, I know where you're going, but.
Counselor, I also want to add too, when we, when we started to look at this, it was actually been a while in the making. If we go back to, I think it was 2015, where we had that huge winter and we were well over 3 million dollars in snow removal costs. We looked at and did a comparison with the city of New Bedford, which has all of its own fleet and they spent just over 1 million dollars. So there was a huge difference in the ex, the expenditure in-house fleet versus, you know, hiring privates. I don't know that we will ever be shocked to the point that we could handle a storm of that. That winter was unbelievable. There was a huge amount of snow, but I think where, as Mr. Perry mentioned earlier, we are going to be able to do the analysis between the city sector and the private sector and then we may very well come back to you next spring and we'll have hard numbers to say if we buy X amount more vehicles, we're going to be able to see a real savings. To your point, the cost benefit has to be done. It was a little difficult for this year because we, we want to do a good job comparing. We, we also want to compare quality. I mean, it's going to be important. It's one thing to be able to avoid hiring privates, but we want the same quality that we've grown accustomed to, so there's, there's maybe some training issues and some additional skill sets we're going to need, but we did look outside of the city and looked at what other communities were doing and we really think there'd be an advantage to having a greater in-house capability as Mr. Perry has described, but in the spring, we'll be able to come back to you with hard numbers and I know you were asking about the long-term plan and additional equipment. That would be an instance where we might be altering the capital plan, next year's capital plan, if we decide that this new initiative is worthy of pursuit and something that we can substantiate again on your cost benefit analysis.
So just three quick questions. So the various, so you mean miscellaneous accessories and equipment for the 58,000? So I'm assuming that's that software to read the codes and everything like that, is that what's built in there?
That, the software and the computers are worked into, into the prices of the trucks.
Okay.
The, the extra money is for parts and accessories that don't marry to the trucks we have now, so it doesn't matter if they're brand new or not. The conditions that these trucks operate in, you're going to need conveyors, you're going to need spinners. You know, you're out there in hazardous conditions, sometimes mirrors, sometimes fog lights, things of that nature, cutting blades for the plows.
Are we looking, and the only reason I was asking, are we looking to put some GPS monitoring tools on top of the, the vehicles and the equipment? Just from a snow operation standpoint, I, I know there are softwares out there that you can see the actual route that the truck has taken, whether or not it has put down any sand dissolves on the road so that if you do get any complaints or if residents are calling saying that their street hasn't been plowed, that we have a, a monitor, monitoring system to say, okay, they, the last time they went by this road, it was a half hour ago. Are we looking to include that into those?
We actually use our current GPS system. That isn't installed on these vehicles. Most of these vehicles and, and I would have to check, but most of these vehicles now currently come equipped with that type of capability. You would just have to put out a contract. You would have to have a contract with the vendor to operate it, so it would just have to be activated, much like your OnStar system in your car or whatnot. So, but right now we have, we contract out with Vestige for our GPSs. Everybody gets a handheld unit that goes in the vehicle. And it has many of the same capabilities that you, you stated. So we all have a login password. We go on and you can see actually the routes that the trucks have taken. And it doesn't necessarily give you the speed that the truck is traveling at, but it would tell you where it's been. It can tell you when it was there and things of that nature.
So you can map it out?
You can map it out, yes, sir.
So my, my second to last question was just in terms of the short-term borrowing, so we have enough covered in the FY 20 budget?
Yes.
Okay. And then in terms of looking at FY 21, because obviously long-term, you're going to probably go out until FY 21 is when you're really going to hit the long-term market. What are we looking, what's our capacity in terms of getting to that 10 million dollars? Not saying that we want to get there, but how much capacity do we have between what we currently have versus that 10 million dollar benchmark?
Certainly, I, I could certainly get that information. I, I laid it out with what we knew when we did the five-year forecast. I believe it was just over 9 million at that point for long-term debt.
Yep.
And then the short-term, we, we estimate about the same amount each year, thinking that we're just going to roll some of the bands and then other bands, we're going to go long-term, so we're utilizing that, that methodology. But we, we currently were just over 9 million dollars.
Okay, alright. If you could just provide that update?
Certainly.
Thank you, I yield.
Counselor in seat two?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'm not sure how many people are aware of this, but John, you have to take care of 273 miles of public roadway in the city. That's how much public roadway we have, 273 miles, and that's a significant amount. A lot of those streets are on hills, which makes it more challenging, more difficult. So I, I give you a lot of credit. You do an outstanding job. I think you know how I feel about you.
Thank you.
And what you've done and your men as well, because the crew that work for you, they do an outstanding job as well.
Thank you.
The CDL driver, how many people do we have with CDLs?
19.
19?
Yes.
And are they going to be assigned to a particular truck? I know you said, you know, we're going to watch trucks, but if one guy jumps in a truck now, another guy jumps in a truck later, unless they're assigned to that truck.
It, unfortunately, Counselor, we, we operate in, in the union. Well, I shouldn't say unfortunately, they'll take that personally. I don't mean it that way. I don't mean it that way. But with union, union guidelines and rules and regulations, as the, the individuals come in, if we have seven drivers for any particular shift, it's, they come in, they all start at the same time, they're issued a truck based on seniority, so employee A with the most seniority may like truck six. He may like this particular area. And they've earned that right based on putting in their time, so that's how we apply that. I understand where you're coming from with that. I actually spoke about it today with a vendor regarding a demonstration we're going to have at the DPW in November with some, some asphalt equipment. It's going to actually be a regional demonstration. They're going to come in and do for us and we were looking at some of the equipment and I was actually discussing with him the fact that it's good that now we have concentrated, dedicated crews because these are the same guys on those crews all the time, so they know, they come in, that equipment's what they're going to be using, so they're, they're more apt to take care of it. But unfortunately, we, we cannot assign a truck to a particular person, but what does generally happen, Counselor, is these guys get familiar and comfortable with certain spots and certain trucks, so you generally have the same guys taking the same trucks based on their seniority. So it doesn't work exactly as, as smoothly as you, you're putting it and we wish it would. But usually you end up with the same guys in the same trucks most of the time.
Alright, because that really makes more sense than.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I understand.
The trucks last longer.
Absolutely.
They run better.
Absolutely.
The, the new DOT regulations, are that affecting snowplow drivers?
DOT regulations in what sense?
As far as how many hours they can be on a road at one time. I know these guys are, they used to have been out there for a long time, you know, working.
Well, we, 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 as far as what the private contractors do, that would be up to their either boss or if they were their own.
Right, what about us?
Individual. For us, we have stipulations that do not require them and we cannot force them to drive any more than 16 hours.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Right, so if they work their regular eight-hour shift during the day and they work an eight-hour overtime shift, they can go home at 11:00 PM and they're not subject to the refusal process that we have that goes against their bonuses. They, they are then subject to be off for 16 if they would like to be. They can come back after eight if they'd like, but they don't have to. So we're cognizant of that, you know?
I just want to make sure it doesn't affect, I mean, you know, the regulations that are out there now, if you guys are on the road for a long time, these trucks are going to have to sit if you don't have enough people to.
Right, alright.
And one last thing.
Sure.
More and more people are putting cameras on trucks. Not for any other reason, other than when there's an accident, it usually comes to the defense a lot more. These are big trucks.
Yep.
And a lot of times smaller vehicles, privately owned cars, get in their way and stuff and then when you end up in court and you're saying, you know, the bigger truck usually looks like the bad guy in most of these instances because of the damage that's done. Have we had any discussions with that as well or?
In our department, no. I know that there's been some discussion in other departments as far as that and I know that they're working toward that and I'm not sure if that's been implemented yet, but it is something to think about.
It is, especially with the conditions that these trucks are out there and what, what's going on. A lot of times the accidents that occur are not the fault of the person that's driving the big truck.
Right.
And it's someone else that's trying to get around the snowplow, speeding and stuff, and these cameras just come to the fence and so many people say, look, this is what happened when they show it happened.
Seen it many times and you show up and it's nobody's fault, right? It wasn't me, it was him, so the finger pointing thing stopped, right? Understood.
As far as, have we had a lot of incidents with accidents and court cases that we've lost or?
We have had some, Counselor, but to this point, we do have two of our departments right now that are looking at that technology specifically. Because of the nature of the camera and the monitoring that goes on, we're actually in conversations with the union about adding that capability. We were anticipating we would do it on a type of a pilot basis just to see how it went, so you're right, it's not affecting Mr. Perry's department, but we are looking at it, but again, there are union considerations that we need to address.
It's your best defense when you're in the courtroom and you can't show whose fault it really was and if it's our fault, we'll do it, but so a lot of times it's not the driver's fault, it's the big truck that's doing it and, you know, looking to how many hours he's been on the road and so he must have been tired or whatever, but a lot of times the camera proves that it was not their fault and it was.
And that's been our exact argument, Counselor, with, with the, the unions to say that, you know, this could actually be a great benefit to them as well as something that they may see as, as a burden, so.
It's their seat of their license. It's not the city's seat of their license. It's to protect them and their license, no matter where they choose to move on the workforce.
But we were, I, I think if we move forward with it, Counselor, it would be in all vehicles within a certain division, not necessarily the CDL, but.
No, no, what I'm saying is when you have this camera placed to protect them, it's their license that you protect them.
Oh, absolutely. That's, that's definitely true.
Because it's true. That's my point. Look, I'm all, I'm all for it. Good luck. I do agree with my colleagues. It's better to scatter these around, but under the state that we're in, we need new trucks. We have to get them soon, but I think we should periodically look to add a couple here and there so that we're not purchasing so many at one time. This way when they're starting to fail, they don't all fail at once.
Sure, I think that'd be the intent, Counselor, yes, I agree.
Put that, I yield. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I recognize Counselor in seat seven and one again, Counselor in seat eight, are you all set? Counselor in seat seven?
Thank you. What we have in the city of Fall River and how you're going to handle it is those crazy bump outs have enslaved low East Main, Purchase and Lewis Street. It's absolutely crazy, I think, what they put there. Do you see any problems with them?
Well, you know, Counselor, as they say, you can't unring the bell, right? So the bump outs are there, but what we do do and what I can tell you is this. You know, each sector has a sector leader or even on a smaller one when we're monitoring it. There are certain areas in every sector of the city that are high priority or delicate areas that you need to be, make sure you're aware of. Those areas will be stressed, especially this year, with the sector leaders to, to make sure that they identify those bump outs and, and try to keep them open and, and uncovered. I don't want to get into the merits of the bump outs or not. That wouldn't be my argument to have with you, Counselor, but at the end of the day, the only way we can seriously try to avoid any issues is to make sure that everybody that's working in the areas that have the bump outs is, are aware that they're there and that that's something they need to be very aware of and cognizant of the fact that they need to take time.
Counselor, as you, I was going to say, Counselor, as you know, that, that was part of the Safe Routes to School project with the state of Massachusetts and they did the designing and the day that we saw you out on, on the roadways, we actually had a very good conversation with Masthat and they, they are looking to try to reduce some of the sizes of those bump outs for just those reasons. I mean, we're concerned about turning radiuses, larger vehicles, the plows, so they are going to be making some slight modifications to some of what you may have seen the day we were out on site. But I, but I will tell you, it's, it's a matter of striking a balance between the pedestrian safety, which is extremely important and also the, you know, the vehicle safety and the maintenance issues, but to Mr. Perry's point, I think if the plows are aware that they exist, we may need to put smaller vehicles in those areas as opposed to the larger ones, but we're hopeful that they're going to be able to maneuver successfully and not create a lot of maintenance issues for us at the end of the winter.
I feel that we have almost a brand-new fleet and I don't want them hitting them bump outs.
I agree.
And a suggestion would be that we put a small rod with a flag and stick it in the tar and they could see it coming down, they know it's a bump out. But, you know, it's for you to decide what you want to do. Maybe after the first accident, you could consider it, but it's something to think about.
Well, that's a good suggestion, Counselor. A lot of people use those. They kind of mock the perimeter. I know Mr. Perry is familiar with them, so.
It's a private lot. They use a stick with a yellow thing on it.
Then you can at least see it, see the edges.
But you can take a.
Then you can at least see it, see the edges, makes good sense.
But you can take a small piece of steel, put a flag on it, and leave it there. The only other thing is, is it a secret? Do you want to tell us? What is a $500 piece of equipment that the fire department could use? You didn't mention.
Uh, $500,000.
$500,000.
$500,000.
Is it half a million or $500,000?
Half a mil.
Half a mil.
Yeah, you like that, does it sound better that way?
I don't know, it sounds like a lot of money either way.
I believe it is an engine. Yeah, we didn't bring it down, Counselor, but again, the chief feels it would be very important as, you know, another vehicle for the fleet. He came to us recommending, he thought the price was very good. But as I said, we haven't finished our analysis with it yet, but the question was asked, would we be likely to be back? It could be as early as your next meeting if we decide to move forward with it.
I'm sure we all like to know what it is, that's for sure.
Sure, we'll certainly get back to you on that, Counsel.
All right, with that, I yield, thank you.
Counselor in seat one?
Thank you, Madam President. Just through the administration, can we, if you are going to come back down, or even if you don't come back down, can we schedule something so in finance committee, we can just go over this capital improvement plan? Because I think it's a good report to start having some conversations.
Sure.
And I've said this before, and I'll say it again, that, you know, we failed to fund the capital needs that the departments need, not just police and fire and DPW, but all the departments. I think we really need to talk about that, the funding mechanism. Just looking at this quickly, it just seems like outside of the building needs, all I saw was police, fire, and I think MIS, and that's probably because they're the larger departments for capital needs. But just looking at FY '20, $541,000 for, I guess, requests for the police department, and some of that might have been already factored into the operating budget. But the fire department's $890,000, and then MIS was $553,000, and then you've got the years going out. I mean, they're pretty significant requests, so I think at the very least, we should be having these conversations to make sure that we're fully aware of what the needs are for the departments, we're talking about the funding mechanisms. Because I know in here, you're looking at potentially other, leveraging our dollars with other...
CPC, right.
Right, other avenues, whether it be CPC, or additional bonding, or, you know, funding it in the operational budget.
Mass school building is in there as well, right.
I think we should have that conversation just as a general scope of conversation, so we can know exactly what to anticipate coming forward for the next fiscal year, so that we have the plan. And if we don't see it, then I think if we are passionate about funding this equipment, we can start asking those questions as to why is it not down before us, things of that nature.
And I think if Council President decides to schedule that in the near term, we'll probably go in and just update it. Again, by charter, it's due in the spring of the year, but again, we have made some purchases, so we can certainly update it for you, so that we're not talking about pieces that have already been addressed, and...
And if, not to interrupt you, but there's also items in there that have significantly changed, like the RPA was out two years, and you've already approved that one because they wanted that project to go forward earlier. So, there's a number of things that change almost daily within that document.
Yeah, no, I wholeheartedly agree with you, some of these, when you're doing the planning, you know, there are factors that you kind of try to project out, and those things don't take place, and then, you know, you kick down, you push it down even further just because there are other priorities.
That you bring forward, exactly.
Or the factors just didn't come out to what you expected them to come out. I get that, I just think from a council standpoint, as opposed to just getting these reports, filing them under our desk, I think we should have these conversations.
Certainly.
Similar to the, you know, the budgets that we're talking about, so that we can, you know, as a team, start, you know, advocating for the needs of the city, for all the departments, again, not just the larger ones, because we can talk about the park department, cemeteries, you know, the finance department, there are some departments, smaller departments that need equipment that just get bypassed because they're so small. So, we want to make sure that we're looking at those departments as well.
Yeah, as I said, Counsel, just give us a little bit of notice, because I think it'll be a good exercise for us to update it as of the date when we're likely to be discussing it.
Thank you, I yield.
Counselor, normally that's given to us in the fall, is that correct, Mrs. Sahadi? But this time, it was done early because of the charter.
The charter now has a required date in it. Counsel President, I'm not, I don't remember, to be honest with you, what that date was. I want to say it's in the spring.
It is, the spring.
Yeah.
So, it did come out, it was on our agenda, and the clerk will check its status tomorrow, we can get it in finance.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Anything further? This time, it would be appropriate to refer it to full counsel? I'm sorry, can't hear you, Counselor.
Motion to refer.
Yeah, we still have to refer it to full counsel for action adoption.
Motion to refer to full counsel.
Do you have a second? Motion made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Motion to adjourn finance.
Excuse me, we have two people that have signed up for citizens input for the end of finance, and I believe they're going to speak together. Alexander Silva, 649 Alden Street, NB Boarding School, and Jim Sewell, 371 Rock Street, NB Boarding School.
Jim Sewell, I represent the Preservation Society of Fall River, I live at, it's actually 577 Rock Street, sorry about that.
Sorry, that was me. And Alex Silva, I'm also on the board of directors of the Preservation Society.
I have to do this at least once. Thank you, Counselors, for having us tonight.
And Madam President?
I do, okay. Anyways, the Preservation Society recently submitted some proposals for ordinance changes for you to consider. And so, I'm here tonight because I want to review one particular case that's glaring right now, that represents the reason why we've put so much effort into these ordinance proposals, which I'm sure you'll be reviewing at a later time. But this is our couple of minutes to describe what our concerns are. So, last week, we submitted a compilation of facts about the Nathaniel Boarding School. We collected it into a timeline with thorough research, all based on facts, there's no rumors, or nothing made up, and it's all factual, since its sale from the city in 2012. Let me also mention, we are not here to bash the current owner of the school, I make that very clear. The goal is to highlight a number of discrepancies and the lack of oversight in the bidding in the sale process, as well as the sale of the, excuse me, of the subdivision of the property in 2014. And barring a change of heart from the property owner or action by the council, the historic Morgan Street School will likely be demolished. But it's our hope that changes could be made to prevent the needless loss of other historical and cultural resources in the future, especially when they could be used to stimulate economic development in the city. Some people are confused about the Preservation Society, they think we're just about historic preservation, but we're not. We almost always tie in historic preservation with economic development. I'll leave it to you to review the details of the sale and the subdivision to whatever extent you see fit, but I want to highlight some of the more concerning contradictions that ultimately the city and the residents have to pay for. Beginning with the bidding process, the standard procedures weren't followed as we see appropriately, since there was no reverter clause and no project timeline. They weren't included in the agreement with the current owner, and even though these key protections were required in their request for bids, so that was a part of the RFP process, there were multiple bidders, this bid came up, but there was nothing to tie the buyer to that. And that could have been done, and probably should have been done, since of the obviously historical nature of the building, either a reverter clause, or a project timeline, or even a preservation restriction deed right then. The owner's original proposal was to convert the school into 12 to 16 apartments, with the owner's engineer telling the committee on real estate in 2012 that it was in of itself rather simple and not a big project. The engineer gave specific cost estimates, saying each apartment would cost about $30,000 to renovate, for total cost of $360,000 at the time. That proposal was chosen over others, and the school was sold to the current owner in 2012 for $5,000. A year later, construction began on a parking lot at the site to be used by the owner's nearby restaurant. By 2014, two years later, the owner's engineer appeared at a ZBA meeting requesting the lot to be subdivided into two parcels, so the lot with the school could be sold to a moving and storage company, and the northern parking lot could remain with the restaurant. At the ZBA meeting, the cost of apartments wasn't referenced a single time as a hardship for the owner, who only argued that the size and shape of the lot made it difficult to develop, despite it being the same size and shape as one originally purchased. At the ZBA meeting, the engineer referenced the previous plan to develop building into apartments when alleging that the neighborhood didn't want 24 apartments in the area. Of course, that was never the intention, it was never supposed to be 24 apartments, it was supposed to be eight to 12 apartments.
Twelve to sixteen.
Sorry, 12 to 16. The engineer said that the moving and storage company had to own the deed to the building. This is a little convoluted, but this was the argument for having the change. They said that the new tenant had to own the building because of the special moving company that he had. It was really a convoluted thing, but that was part of the argument for why they were approved for the ZBA change. The ZBA voted to prohibit further subdivision on the parcel with the school as a condition of the 2014 subdivision, but that condition was never included in the official variance. Soon after, the property's assessment is changed to commercial warehouse. However, since the building was never sold to a moving and storage company, it's unclear to what extent a moving and storage company operated there, despite the clear warehousing of items as seen through the windows to this day, including old used mattresses that were covering the windows. The rights authorized by the variance were to lapse, they were supposed to lapse, if they weren't exercised within one year. In the owner's letter of intent to demolish the structure, the previous plan to sell the building is not mentioned at all. Instead, it cites a $3.5 million renovation price tag as the reason for the demolition.
15 seconds, Mr. Sewell.
Thank you. Which is unsubstantiated increase of 700%, compared to the original estimate in 2012. The owner also said he spent between $100,000 and $300,000 on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Sewell.
And I'm just going to pick off.
I give you, that was the whole time for all of you, unless there is a motion. Motion to waive the rules, a second. Motion made by Counselor in seat two, Joseph Kamara.
Two paragraphs.
Seconded by Counselor in seat three, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you, thank you so much for hearing us. Since the property was sold in 2012, its total assessed value was decreased from $1 million to $200,000 for 80%. The building's total assessed value has decreased from $800,000 to $15,000, a decrease of 98%. All of this despite the owner telling the Herald News in May that the building was still solid and hadn't changed much since when he purchased it. By not providing evidence and because of his reluctance to appear at multiple public meetings, the property owner has left the public with few answers to these discrepancies, as well as questions of the owner had really exhausted all of his options for redevelopment, like pursuing historic tax credits and grants, CPA and others. With the owner's current plan to demolish the building and build a parking lot in Fall River, is opposed to not only lose a piece of its history forever, but also roughly $800,000 of assessed property value and all the benefits redevelopment would have provided the city. Just my final ending on that is that, again, this has not meant so much to beat up on the current owner. It's because it's really, I think, a breach in the way the sale could have or should have done. And the ordinance proposals that we prepared, like I said, you'll be able to review them later, I think copies have gone out to you, and we'd be more than happy to be part of the process or discussion in the future going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn finance? Motion made by Counselor in seat three, seconded by Counsel Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
And finance is adjourned, two-minute recess. City Council will now come to order, Madam Clerk, read the roll.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Joseph Kamara?
Here.
Stephen Kamara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Long? Pelletier?
You scared me, yeah, here.
Baviris? Vice President, Lollababy Lebo.
Here. I was criticized for my light gavel banging, so...
Oh, okay.
Will everyone in the council chamber please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing for a salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first item before you is the communication from the mayor and the veto of the proposed ordinance limiting the number of marijuana facilities.
Motion to lift from the table?
Do we need a motion to lift, Madam Clerk?
No, no.
No.
Why is the state, states was tabled in accordance with the...
It was, the charter does not allow you to act on it when it's first submitted.
Can we just, out of abundance of caution, can we just take a motion to lift it from the table, please?
Motion to lift, item, Counsel Kilby, do you have a second?
Second.
Counsel Pelletier, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Appropriate would be a motion to override.
Motion to override.
Motion made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Kilby, any discussion? Counselor in seat one?
Thank you, Madam President. So, the letter that came down from, I'll say Jaisel Correa, as a reason to not approving this, the very first sentence said a serious question exists as to whether the city council or any municipal authority can legally limit the number of marijuana licenses, as that appears to be with the exclusive statutory authority of the Cannabis Control Commission. Thus, the ordinance as written may expose the city to unnecessary litigation by the future permit seekers. This, to me, makes absolutely no sense. First of all, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 3, gives us the authority to go ahead and do that. The ordinance committee sat down with Corporation Counsel, who originally was under the opinion that the city council cannot put in an ordinance to limit the number of licenses at the 20%. I then forwarded a legal opinion that I had in terms of, you know, Chapter 94G, Section 3. After rereading it, he agreed. So, we've got Corporation Counsel that agrees with the writing of the, or the interpretation of the Massachusetts General Law. We've got a general law, and we've got other communities who ultimately allow this to take place. The second thing, I don't, the second paragraph was that it was unilaterally and arbitrarily attempting to limit the number of licenses. I think it's twofold, I think part of the conversation, again, was when this first started, talking about kickbacks and the council needing to put a limit on the number of licenses until we can get a handle on that. At that point, obviously, the indictments never came down. People were still, I guess, supportive of a notion that that wasn't taking place. We clearly know that that's taking place, we've got a federal indictment that suggests that... We've got a federal indictment that suggests that that is taking place. And then the last paragraph, which was really directed towards me, saying that, for one, me serving as an administrator in another community should have recused myself. Number one, I shouldn't recuse myself. I've got no financial gain. Number two, the town of Seekonk has already issued two licenses and we're trying to do exactly what the city of Fall River is doing, and that's limiting it to the 20 percent. So that statement in itself is inaccurate. And I think the last sentence, in limiting the number of, the number in Fall River, that he, meaning I, advantages the town by which he is employed by eliminating competition and disadvantaging the city. I, for one, am not disadvantaging the city. I'm not the one that took any type of kickbacks. I think that's a disadvantage to the city and we're starting to see that the Cannabis Control Commission really taking a high look and a stance at all the licenses or the community host agreements that were issued. Again, as I mentioned earlier, and I'll say it again, I think this council should override this. I think there should be a limit, at least until we can make some determination as to, number one, what type of internal policies and procedures are going to be issued to make sure that the businesses that are applying for this are getting a fair shake and have a legitimate plan. In the town of Seekonk, as I stated before, the process is with the Board of Selectmen. It's not with one individual. The Board of Selectmen are the executives of the town. They have to conduct their business in open session, per the open meeting law. There is no backroom deals. Everything is public, transparent. From my standpoint, we went to visit the locations that, from the businesses that were listed. We asked for security plans, financials. We asked what the impact was going to be to the community, both from an infrastructure, quality of life, sound, noise, things of that nature. We've asked what type of vetting process there was in the city of Fall River, and there is none. And I think it was very, very arbitrary. So, again, as individuals and the type of individual that we're dealing with tends to deflect what they do onto others. I, for one, have been a part of a very open process. This process has not been open. This council has not had any say whatsoever in terms of the number of licenses. And if you recall, when we were starting to limit the licenses, it started at 11, then went to 13 and 14. So the only, but, the only person that's disadvantaged at this was Jaisel Correa because obviously he could not issue any more licenses if we put a limit on this. So I think now it's time to put the limit and just take a pause on the issuing of these host community agreements to make sure that we know who they are, the companies that are coming in, and that they're actually getting these licenses on the sole merit of their business and their business plan and their model and what they're going to give back to the community. With that, I'll be supporting the override. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, would you just read the letter?
Sure. Dear City Council, I am disapproving and vetoing the attached order for the following reasons. A serious question exists as to whether the city council or any municipal authority can legally limit the number of marijuana licenses, as that appears to be within the exclusive statutory authority of the Cannabis Control Commission. Thus, the ordinance as written may expose the city to unnecessary litigation by future permit seekers. By unilaterally and arbitrarily attempting to limit the number of licenses, the ordinance eliminates competition, artificially inflates the value of licenses already issued, removes the legal sale of marijuana products from market forces, and eliminates a valuable source of additional revenue to the city. In addition, a sitting counselor voted inappropriately to limit the number of licenses available in Fall River while serving as town administrator of Seekonk, a community which itself is in the process of granting marijuana permissions. In limiting the number in Fall River, he advantages the town by which he is employed by eliminating competition and disadvantaging this city. For the above reasons and the counselor's failure to recuse himself, I must veto this order in the best interests of the city.
Thank you. Counselor in Seat Seven, Counselor Pelletier?
Thank you. I visited one of the companies and sat down with the individual, and it turns out, you know, he says, "I've been promised that we wouldn't have more than five here in the city of Fall River." And I says, "Wow, here we are. He's making promises. All of a sudden, he's handing out these letters of non-opposition just about to everybody." I still stand saying that 20 percent with the CCC, that the city could have, according to the numbers of package stores, which was eight. And I sat down and we're, eight. And the following week or two weeks later, it was up to 10. And then it went up to 14. And one of the arguments, argument that he was getting a few dollars for his defense fund. Well, you can call it what you want. Defense fund, yeah, I'll take 10 here, 20,000 here. So he racks up like 60,000 worth of defense fund. So be it. I know well, I can't take more than $1,000 in monies from somebody that wants to help my campaign. He's taken all these kinds of monies. So now he goes out and does what he has to do. So he got six more than eight that he maybe asked for a bribe, donation, or whatever case may be. I think the CCC should know where we stand, and they should know that anybody who gave a bribe was asked to give money for that particular letter of non-opposition, that these people up in Boston, make sure that these people don't recognize what the mayor signed for the other six. So, I mean, the city doesn't need more than eight. And what happened here in the city of Fall River? The greed set in, and it's a mess throughout the city of Fall River. And if, you know, if my colleagues would like to send a letter to CCC saying, "Hey, listen, I think, you know, the other, the other six, we don't honor them." And the only problem I got by him signing that, are we obligated to help these guys out to make sure that they get a start up? But anybody who gave any money should get nothing, nothing at all. I don't care if they're in business now or not in business, they'd be shut right down. There was a case in Rhode Island, an individual got a liquor license, didn't have to go through the board, he just paid the bribe. Here's the bribe, here's the license. Then they come down on him, that's it, your license is gone, you bribed, that's it, you're all done. So that's what I like to see. Leave it at eight, let the CCC know how we feel here in the city of Fall River. With that, I think I said enough about it. It's a tough situation. It's bad, but we have to live with it. With that, I yield.
Counsel, would you like the clerk to write a letter from the council to the CCC?
I'd like to if they'd like to send it, just to let them know how we feel about it. I mean, I'm sure they're going to do something, but maybe they need a little bit of concrete thing to say, "Hey, Fall River is absolutely right. This is crazy. What the mayor done is crazy. Are there other places throughout the state of Massachusetts?" And I understand there's a few more in the same situation. But it's time for them to say, "Here, here's what we gotta do. Gotta stock this right now in a bud. Fall River's in a bind. Let's correct it so the state is all on the same page." In all of these businesses, you can't, an individual sitting here could not afford to open one of these up. You need a lot, a lot of money, and the only big companies are going to get it. And, you know, if you're giving out 200,000 for a letter, that's crazy. They got the money, they can do it. But the thing is, if they get caught, they're in trouble. So with that, yeah, I'd like to send a letter if anybody would like to sign along with me, I'd appreciate it. With that, I yield.
Madam Clerk, could you work on the wording for that?
Sure.
And we can read it at the end when we send the ordinances. That'd be fine? Thank you. Counselor in Seat Four?
Yeah, just, just quickly, I'd like to congratulate Sean on this, being spot on on this issue. Did take some unnecessary political heat from it, if we think about it. Here's a mayor penning that letter when he was already getting kickbacks from individuals and then trying to deflect and blaming on another council, seeing the council has a conflict. It's just, just crazy, crazy, crazy. Also, let's not forget that a state representative from Dartmouth, Chris Markey, outside Fall River, is filing legislation to, you know, to hold off or eliminate licenses for Fall River, I believe, three local representatives are also filing legislation for moratorium. So, but the action we're taking today is exactly what our counterparts are doing. And, you know, to think about this a little bit more, too, the mayor, Jaisel Correa, is saying that it's inappropriate to the people who have issued licenses and the financial impact to the city. His actions, not our actions, his actions have put the spotlight for these, for marijuana companies in Fall River. It's not the council. So he indirectly is supporting our video, veto, overriding his video. So I think the action we're taking is totally in line with what we should be doing. And, and I, once again, Sean, Counselor Kadeem, I congratulate you on taking a strong, a strong stance on this issue. And I appreciate it. Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Counselor in Seat Three?
Yeah, I, I must admit that as legislators, my colleague in Seat Four as an attorney, I've not heard the word alleged at all in this debate. And I know that there may be reason for some to snicker. I happen to understand and believe that the Constitution and due process belongs to every citizen, even those that are presumed to be guilty. It's, it's, what makes this country great is not to support the rights of individual citizens when it's obvious and easy to support those rights, but it's to support the rights of individual citizens when it's hard, when all evidence seems to be, all circumstantial, all alleged activities, all comments and et cetera, seem to be leaning and pointing to one direction. But ultimately, what the Constitution requires is that there be a jury of one's peers to determine one's innocence or guilt. So I have, you know, no problem talking about the issue of innocence and guilt and due process and the American Constitution and all of that, but that's not what's before us right now. What's before us is a question about whether or not there should be a limited number of licenses for those that are going to be in this industry. We, as citizens and we, as counselors, need to be looking out for the financial stability of this community. What is a result of licenses being issued is that the city of Fall River legally receives a $50,000 payment, and they also receive, I believe it's 3% of the sales of the product. For homeowners, taxpayers, renters, businesses, that means some relief, because if taxes are coming from some other source or revenue is coming from some other source, there's a good likelihood that their revenue that's coming out of the pockets of the remaining individuals that are contributing to the revenue in the city would be lessened. There seems to be a lot of motion here, so I'll just ask my colleague, the council president, to just acknowledge people so that... No, 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 I said motion, motion. Waving your hands, I was just trying to stay focused on the issue. So what I'm requesting is that we try to, and I think there's room to certainly consider ordinance changes, maybe the council by ordinance should be the presenter of letters of, of non-opposition. You know, it almost sounds like what is being done is that, that people are giving, are being given a key to open a business, when that's not the case at all. Only the Cannabis Control Commission can approve a business opening. All the city does is it provides a letter of non-opposition. In towns, that may come from the Board of Selectmen, it seems clear that in New Bedford, it comes from a combination of the mayor and the council. If eventually this council chooses to have a city manager form of government, it very well may be the council that would make that decision, depending on what ordinances would be prepared. So there are lots of ways that we could approach this issue, but I think just by unilaterally establishing a limit is unfair to the industry. I think it's unfair to the consumer. And I, as far as Representative Markey, I believe, who is promoting his own issuances of licenses in Dartmouth and New Bedford, or anybody else, anyplace else, so however the state legislature wants to involve itself, and I understand there's not much support for what's being considered by Representative Markey, but we'll let that legislative body do its duty. What we need to do is our duty, and I'll stand by my original intent, which is that let the market decide. If, if three, three open businesses are all that can survive financially, then there will only be three. If there are eight, there'll only be eight. Let the market decide. As the market decides every business in the city, the market decides on how many businesses of this type, unless it's limited as it is by the state legislature, as is the case with local licenses. So I think there are enough laws in place, but I'm willing to have the council consider additional ordinances that might give the council more authority in the issuance of letters of non-opposition. But I'm not willing to support an override of this veto, because I think it's based on a whole lot of things that go beyond the scope of the question, should there be a limited number of marijuana dispensaries in the city of Fall River? I believe that limit should be determined by the market. Let the market prevail. Let the market make that determination. I'm a free market promoter. This is an opportunity for us to promote the free market. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Before I recognize Counselor in Seat One again, would Counselor in Seat Two or Eight like to speak? Counselor in Seat Two?
Yes, thank you. I know it's on our agenda. I know what I voted for last time, and I know what I'm doing today and I know why I'm doing it. I know what the benefit to the city is financially. I also know what the benefit to the water department would be financially when we entered into agreement with the town of Burriville, Rhode Island, not the town, but the people who want to do a development in Burriville, Rhode Island, when my colleague in Seat Three was dead set against that outside money coming to the city to ease the burden on the taxpayers of Fall River. So sometimes it works in his favor when he wants to ease the burden for the taxpayers, and other times, he doesn't like it. So I understand what my colleague is saying, and he has a right to say whatever he wants. So do we. We're all adults here. We know what's before us. We know why we're going to vote for this and why we're not going to vote for this. And people can put whatever spin they want on this, but this is very simple. I, as someone who's been here and seen what's happened, know that I agree we should limit this. Other businesses in this city have limits as how many licenses are applicable to them, and this is no different. So my belief is that we don't need 150 or 30 or 40 marijuana license businesses in this community. Therefore, I am going to override the veto and do what I've done in the past, stay consistent. And I understand everyone's going to say what they want about this issue, and we're all just going to have to agree to disagree. People can take their vote, and I respect everyone's votes, my colleague in Seat Three and everyone else, but I know what I'm here to do, and I don't need someone saying that we're doing this for different reasons other than what we think is the right thing. I think it's best interest of the city forever to limit the number of marijuana licenses and industries in this community. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in Seat Eight, Counselor Viveras?
Thank you. I was not in favor of putting a limit on the marijuana licenses, but I think, given the circumstances, and it really was more of a matter of, I wasn't too crazy about the idea of what we were using to put the limit on. I think we had enough information to do it. Given the circumstances, I've reconsidered that position, and so therefore I will not be supporting the veto tonight, so, that I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in Seat One?
Thank you, Madam President. Just, unfortunately, I feel like I've got to get some facts out there, because I think as Counselor in Seat Two has eloquently put it, more often than not, we put a lot of spin on different things, and then misinformation, then we wonder how misinformation gets out to the, to the general public. First of all, I don't think any counselor is saying that anybody is guilty before they're proven guilty, right? We all agree that you're innocent until proven guilty. However, that does not mean that you haven't done... However, that does not mean that you haven't done what is alleged to be done. If that were the case, then we wouldn't have statements like, "You got away with murder", right? That statement comes around because somebody committed murder and got away with it because they were found not guilty in the court system. Does not mean they didn't murder somebody, okay? The other fact is, is that we've got three individuals who have pled guilty to taking bribes and working out a scheme to take bribes for these licenses. Three people have already pled guilty, so we're not waiting for them to be convicted of their crimes by a jury, they have pled guilty. The CCC issues the license, that's absolutely correct. However, before you can even submit an application to the CCC per the general law and the regulations that have been established, you need a community host agreement, which is given now by the mayor, okay? Second thing, unilaterally established a cap, or arbitrarily established a cap. This city council has never unilaterally or arbitrarily set a cap. There are guidelines, again, regulations, and in state statute, the state law, that states that the council or the legislative body can cap at 20%. Now, if you don't agree with that number, then that's the state legislature that put in the 20% cap. Maybe they unilaterally or arbitrarily determine that, we're just trying to follow that, and that's exactly what this ordinance is saying, that we are going to cap it at the 20% of the off-premise liquor licenses. So, that is a very specific number that's identifying the number of licenses that we're going to give out. So, that is not arbitrary, it's not unilateral. In terms of additional ordinances, I would absolutely support additional ordinances that would give this council more authority to make sure that there is a check and balance. However, I find it ironical that we speak, ironic that we speak out of both sides of our mouths when we come to do this stuff, because I've, I've put forward ordinances in the past to try to have more checks and balances from this city council, and all I've heard is, is that this is outside our legislative scope, okay? So, now, we're going to try to create more of a checks and balances, on which I believe should absolutely take place. So, again, I don't, I don't think counselors should be picking and choosing what side of an argument they're going to be on, and then determine when it's convenient to say one thing when they've said something else previously in a different scenario. It just gets frustrating after a while. But those are the facts. We've got three individuals who pled guilty to taking bribes for these host, community host agreements. The city absolutely has to sign off on community host agreements before any type of vendor or company gets a license, and there is a state law with regulations that set the actual cap before it needs to go out for an actual ballot vote. With that, I yields.
Thank you, counselor. Anything further?
Yeah, just one quick comment, please. Counselor Kamara, to my, to my right, over the last number of meetings, I don't think I'm going to hear "free market, free market, free market" for the rest of my life, more than I've heard it for the last couple of weeks. But let's not forget, a free market is based on a fair, open, and transparent market. That's how it works. That's how a free market works. And this has not been fair, this has not been transparent, it's been criminal, and there's charges that are looming as a result. So, I, I'm having a great deal, deal of difficulty trying to rationalize in my man, my mind why my colleagues to my, my right doesn't get this. Why doesn't you get it? We're not convicting Jaisal Karir. He's charged, he has his due process rights, we all believe in the Constitution. He's going to have his day in court, but we're taking an action here because we see sound, credible evidence that these type of actions have been undertaken, and we're making the appropriate vote. And this, this moratorium, this, this cap is not edged in stone, as I said before. If another administration comes in and, and requests that the council change that, change the ordinance, we can do that. But this is taken like an, an emergency order in court. This is taking a, a, a very appropriate action in light of the criminal activity that has been going on in this city with these arbitrary kickbacks as a result of a very, very corrupt administration. I yield.
Thank you, counselor. Anything further? Counselor C-7?
How many votes do we need to pass this time?
Six, counselor, two-thirds.
Not the seven, six?
Yes.
Okay. I yield.
Anything further? A motion on the floor made by Counselor Kadim, motion to override, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Madam Clerk, roll call.
On overriding the mayor's veto, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Long?
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
Vice President LaLavie LeBonne? Yes. Motion carries. Yes, Madam Clerk?
Do we miss? Ready? We have requests from the Traffic Commission to amend ordinances?
Motion to refer to Ordinance Committee?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
A request from the City Engineer to open a street less than five years old at 807 Plymouth Avenue.
Motion to refer to Public Works and Transportation?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion on the motion, I'm sorry.
What is it for? What's the street building for?
807 Plymouth Ave.
No, I know where.
Utilities.
It's a road opening to install utilities at 807 Plymouth Avenue.
Counselor C-1?
Thank you. So, I would just ask the committee to ask the question, and I know the engineer stated that the work is intended to be executed using trenchless, trenchless technology, and it's probably diagonal drilling to connect. So, if we could just ask, I know that's typically done, they might go from the sidewalk, depending on where the connection is, but unfortunately, when you go do that diagonal drilling, you can still compromise the roadway depending on the soil and, and things of that nature. So, I would just make sure that we ask whoever is invited down...
Public Works and Transportation, it's chaired by Counselor Viveras.
So, if, if Counselor Viveras or the members of that, whoever they invite down to have this conversation, if we can ask about that trenchless technology and the guarantees that it has not to impact the roadway.
You yield, counselor?
I do.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Have the annual report of the Fall River Public Library?
Please accept, place on file, library report. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
We have the miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Item number six is a proposed ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment relating to city fire alarms.
Motion to pass the second reading and enrollment?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Kadim, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Have a number of citations?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
The, item eight is the order granting permission to Niup Bang at 22 Bayview Street for the removal of curbing.
Do we take eight to 11?
Any objections for eight to 11?
No, counsel.
Motion to take items eight through 11 has been made.
Second.
The Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Kadim, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Madam Clerk?
Motion to adopt, eight to 11?
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kadim, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Item number 12 is the Police Chief's Report.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
We have requests for the renewal of auto repair shop license.
Motion to adopt, renewal?
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kadim. Madam Clerk, any objections?
No objections to any of them.
All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
And item 14 is the renewal of auto body shop licenses.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kadim, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
One aye, two ayes, thank you. So voted.
Have a light order at 460 Baker Street?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kadim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Have a number of claims?
Cooperation Council?
Motion made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
The drain layer license for global contracting services?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt, or motion approved, Madam Clerk?
Motion to, excuse me, approve the drain layer license.
Motion approved made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Kadim, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Item number 18 is the application on behalf of Shane Henneken of Liberty Utilities for placement of a banner. We did receive an updated application, they are changing the location to Bedford Street at Eastern Avenue. The banner will be up from tomorrow, September 25th through October 4th.
How big is the banner?
Four by 10. And it was approved by the Building Inspector.
Motion to adopt?
Motion approved made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
And item number 19 is the structure over a public way on behalf of the Holy Name School.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion approved made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
We have minutes of the Planning Board meeting.
Accept and place on file.
Motion made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Pelletier, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Item 21 is a communication from a resident regarding false alarm charges.
Motion to refer to file? Refer? No, that's fine.
Could refer this to the Ordinance Committee?
So we had moved to Ordinance Committee? Second.
Motion made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kilby, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
The Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on September 24th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying loan order be referred to the full council for action. This is the $2.1 million for snow removal equipment.
Move adoption of the order?
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, any discussion?
They just, is that all that's needed, is the adoption of the order, or is there no need to advertise, or to?
It'll be advertised.
It's automatic. Okay. I yield.
You yield, counselor? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Do we have a brief recess to sign orders?
Two-minute recess? Five-minute recess?
Counselor President?
Yes, counselor.
If I may, we've got a letter from Bisco. Could you have that, could you please read it, so everybody knows what's going on?
We have a, I'm sorry, say that again?
It's a letter being drafted.
I wanted her to read the letter, the letter from Bisco, that we got, what, today?
I don't have that, Madam Clerk.
Well, I got it, yeah. Had some drops put in my eyes. What's this? Oh.
Just, just a point of order, Madam President?
Excuse me, one second, counselor.
Still waiting.
Okay. We're going to do a roll call on the loan order. Madam Clerk?
On adoption of the loan order, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
Vice President LaLavie LeBonne?
Yes. Point of order, counselor?
I just, I, I know that there's a reference to a letter that we, I think, all received from Bisco Construction Company. However, it's not on the agenda, so would it be appropriate for it to be presented now, or be presented once it's put on the agenda?
We're actually going to take a five-minute recess to sign the orders, and then I will get back to you on that.
Just receive.
I'm sorry?
Just receive.
Madam Clerk? You just want us to read it, counselor?
Yeah, here's the problem. He wants to get things squared away. JR is not cooperating. He wants the information, and if he don't get the information by the end of this week, he wants his money. That's it. It's a mess up there, it's no good. Even Cliff thinks that we should do something, that we should do something. JR is not working with Bisco. Let's get this thing done. It's a mess up there. We do it now. They want their money at the end of this week. I say we go for all the marbles and get the whole new street, and he says that's not acceptable. So, they got to sit down and work this thing out, and I think tonight, we should let him know. JR, what are you doing? What are you doing? You're going to cost us money. That's the whole thing. That's why I asked to read, to read the, the letter, so everybody knows what's going on.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the letter?
Certainly. The letter is to JR Frye. A courtesy copy was sent to the council this afternoon and distributed by email. Dear JR, I am once again writing relative to the above matter. The day after the last council meeting, September 11th, you contacted me to tell me that you would be providing specific locations for any purported failures per the project specifications, together with a time for a meeting at the site to discuss all, with all involved parties. It is now September 24th, and you still have not provided this information. Time is of the essence. Any repair work that will be required per the contract documents needs to be done while the weather allows. Please get back to us by the end of the week, including a written list of any areas that you contend do not meet the project specifications with reference to the specific provisions. As we have previously noted, simply stating the entire project needs to be repaved is not an acceptable response. Additionally, we will need to meet no later than Wednesday, October 2nd, to address these issues. If you do not provide the requested information, which we have been requesting for several months, we expect final payment to be made immediately.
That's the problem. So, either we, can we talk about it?
Go ahead, counselor.
I mean, we got to get JR to set up something with Bisco to get this squared away. I don't want to have to wait till, till it's too late and, and things don't work out. I mean, it's up to him to sit down with him and let us know what's going on, and let us know what he'd like to do, and I know what I'd like to see. And that's two different things. He's got a barn out there. If we got to bring the barn in and get it done right, that's what we should do. We're getting short on time. So, I guess what we need is send JR, or give him a call, tell him to move, and get things squared away.
Counselor, unfortunately, Mr. Frye is not here. We could send him a communication, we have the city administrator here, if you'd like to speak to her.
Yeah, well, whatever we got to do, shake him up, I mean, I don't want to let this go too long.
Do we have motion to waive the rules for the city administrator to come down?
I don't...
Counselor C-... Do you yield, counselor?
Yeah.
Counselor C-2?
Listen, I mean, the, the entire thing is a mess, and we're not going to resolve it tonight with the city administrator without JR and Mr. Bisco. To have the city administrator come down and tell us what we already know, there's a clear disagreement, and JR hasn't identified exactly what he wants Bisco to do. So I think if my colleague wants to see some type of action, there should have been a meeting already if they haven't met, or maybe they're at a disagreement. So Mr. Bisco should probably go see, visit JR himself and find out in the man in writing what the problem is. And I don't, I don't know if they've met, not met, but for the councils to jump by board now with the administration down, it's good now. Without having Mr. Fry here or Mr. Bisco, in my opinion, it's going to be a waste of time.
Thank you, councillor. You yield?
Not yet, no. So, to my colleague in seat seven, I understand he's not happy, he wants a new road. Is that going to happen? Is Mr. Bisco saying he's going to replace?
It's, it's wrong, it's, uh...
Excuse me, councillors, I think we have a communication. Madam Clerk?
The council president, upon receiving this email, did respond to Mr. Bisco, to the city administrator, to Cooperation Council, and to JR Fry, asking that this be, that they follow up and that this be basically cleared up ASAP.
Could you read that, Madam Clerk?
Sure, sure. Good afternoon. Please be advised that this matter regarding the East Main Streetscapes project continues to get more and more complicated. There appears to be a disconnect, and this needs to be resolved at once. Mr. Bisco has sent another letter to the city council, as well as city administrator, to get specific locations for any purported failures per the project specifications. While I do not understand, what I do not understand is why it takes Mr. Bisco to send the city a follow-up letter asking for these details. Who is dropping the ball? My suggestion is for all of us to get in a room and work out these matters. I also think a few councillors should be part of the meeting as well. For this to continue to get dragged on is unfortunate. Why hasn't this happened already? While I admit I have not been privy to all of the discussions that were had and where communication issues have occurred, it is irrelevant. We need to move past this and get on the same page. Please respond to Mr. Bisco by the end of the week and copy me on this communication, as well as councillor LeBeau. Your attention to this matter is greatly appreciated.
That suffice, councillor?
What's that?
Will that suffice?
Does this suffice?
Does that letter suffice? Is that appropriate? Are you happy with this letter?
No, that, that, I mean, we just got to get him to move, that's all.
And we can keep the councillors updated on the response?
How come I can't hear you?
We can keep the councillors updated on the response.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, councillor, you had the floor.
Yeah, no, that's fine, as long as that's the situation.
You yield?
I yield, thank you.
Anything further?
Yeah, and I'd like to move to adjourn.
We have some orders to sign.
Move to recess.
Yeah, we'll take a brief recess. Council is back in session. Madam Clerk?
Okay, we have the miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through final ordination.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Motion made by councillor in seat one, seconded by councillor Stephen Kamara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted.
And we have the ordinance relating to city fire alarms for passage?
So moved.
To final ordination.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Kadim, seconded by councillor Stephen Kamara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Motion to adjourn made by councillor? I'm sorry, oh yes, I'm sorry, we have one more letter. Yes, please.
This is the letter referenced by councillor Pelletier. Dear, dear members of the Cannabis Control Commission, during the meeting of the city council held on September 24th, the Fall River City Council voted to override the mayor's veto of an ordinance to limit the number of marijuana licenses available at any one time in the city of Fall River to be limited to 20 percent of off-premise liquor licenses, or 11, whichever number is greater. With our vote, we are limiting the number of licenses because we feel no more licenses are needed in the city of our size, and because of the recent information learned with regards to how some of these licenses were obtained with letters of non-opposition allegedly received because of bribes given to our current mayor. As a result, we ask you to thoroughly investigate all applications and any company found to have taken part in these bribes to receive a favorable letter. If these companies are found to have given bribes, their applications should be void and/or their licenses be rescinded. In light of our vote to limit the number of licenses, we further request the Cannabis Control Commission also limit the number of issued licenses to no more than 20 percent or 11, whichever is greater, as outlined in the ordinance. Thank you in advance for your consideration of the matter.
Motion to adopt?
Can we have a copy of that?
Can you have a copy of it?
Yes.
Certainly.
We usually get copies of whatever we're going to be voting on.
Councillor was prepared. It was prepared this evening.
Just requesting what's been requested by other councillors at other meetings.
We can, everybody can receive a copy? Motion to adopt made by councillor Pelletier, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by councillor Kadim, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Seat three opposed.
Three opposes.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn made by councillor Kadim?
Second.
Seconded by, I'm sorry, who was it? Councillor Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
City councillors adjourn.
Want your copy?